We're going to go ahead and get started. We think we're going to have our candidates make an opening statement. And hopefully, by the time we get here with these people, our last candidate will have arrived. So we'll keep our fingers crossed that she gets here safely. And I'd like to welcome you all here. My name is Becky Cox, and I represent the Legal Women Voters. And I really extend a welcome to all of you that showed up for our forum this evening for the council. And this forum is being sponsored by the Community Coalition consisting of the Legal Women Voters, Align One, Cindy, raise your hand.
Danielle.
Cindy's one. And then, uh, and the Highlight Times, where's Cam, raise your hand. And the Southwest Seattle Chamber of Commerce.
Southside.
And the Burian Library, Thomas Swayner. And we are, um, there will be a similar forum to this on the 16th that will be featuring the candidates for the school board. So keep that in mind for present. Supposedly, they will be upstairs instead of downstairs this next time. We'll see, depends on whether the elevator's fixed. And also because we are, this coalition of organizations are very committed to making sure that everybody has a chance to make an informed decision about your candidates, about your citizens that are running for office before you mail your ballots in. So the ballots will be dropping in three weeks, so keep your eye out for those. And because this is your forum, that's why we've asked you to sell a question cards. And I thank you all for being very prolific. This is great. And they will be, they're going to be screened by our, those two at the end of the table, to avoid duplicates and to make sure we don't have one, like, when was the last time you kicked a cat or something like that in there? And we want to give everybody a wide range of topics that you can answer, and we want to avoid duplications. And our moderator this evening is a longtime citizen activist, which I think probably many of you know, Rose Clark. Raise your hand, Rose. Good pass. And Rose will give our, will now give our guests and candidates the rules of the road, so you'll know how to operate. And let's get started, Rose.
I've always wanted to give the rules of the road. First, a disclaimer. The reason we are here in this room, normally, we don't have political events in this room. And even though it's, this is kind of considered a political event, is the elevator is broken. It was a question of ADA accessibility, because we were using the room up on the second floor. And so, we got down on our knees and begged the city, please, let us have it here, because we didn't know where else we were going to go. And so, they said, okay. And so, they are not a sponsor, and I want to say that one more time, the city is not a sponsor of this forum. So I too want to commend the candidates for being here. It's really important for the audience to be able to hear from you and to be able to make their decisions with firsthand knowledge of the answers you're going to give tonight. I know some of the questions are going to be a little bit difficult here, because I've already seen them. And I don't envy you guys, I'm glad I'm not sitting up there. So, for the audience, we're going to ask that all of your questions be directed to everybody. No single question for one single candidate, please. We will give each candidate two minutes for an opening remarks. Ninety seconds, when we get into the questions, ninety seconds to answer each question for each one. And then, at the end, a two-minute closing time. So, we'll also ask you, please do not applaud. Do not be like the teenagers that I used to work with at Kai High School, and roll your eyes, please. But sit back and listen. It's, again, really, really important to be a good informed voter. And I'm hoping that all of you go out of here, all charged up, ready to vote when those ballots reach out. So we will start, so we start here with Debbie, and go that way this time. We will alternate, so it will always be going in the same direction, so that you won't always be first.
Thomas has a line. We'll be right back.
Hello. I'm Debbie Wagner, I'm running for position six. And I'm a longtime Burian resident. I've lived in the community for 22 years. My husband and I have raised our children here. They've attended Highland Schools. During that time, I volunteered in the schools, also volunteered in the community and arts and environment with children, with sports, and basically wanting to make sure that our citizens are protected from impacts from Sea-Tac Airport. So that's been a lot of volunteer work that I've done since 1993. I've been involved in Burian politics since that time, when I was working with the mayor Orange Javari on issues related to fighting the third runway. So I have a long-time relationship with the city. I was formerly living in Des Moines, which is not too much different than Burian, with a lot of residential land uses and a small business district. And I just wanted to say that I'm, I'm experienced, if experience matters. When you go to a job interview, sometimes they ask you what your skill set is, so do you know the job? Well, I've been on the job in the past, so I have a skill set of understanding the comprehensive plan, the Burian budget, some of our challenges with road improvements, stormwater management, and other things like that, that are important to the functioning of the city and the infrastructure. And then also, some parks and recreation issues, and policing, and those are all very important to our community, and members of our community, of public safety and recreational opportunities in the city. So I do have some experience, and as some of these council members sitting here know full well, these are voluminous documents to get through when you're first brought into the city. It's quite a bit to understand in a short period.
Good evening. Thank you for the, to the organizers for putting on this event. I'm Sophia Aragon, I'm running for position six as well. And I have the privilege of running for office, thanks to the opportunities I've had growing up in the northwest. I immigrated here from the Philippines with my family. And my mother had a great job, full health benefits. The area at the time was very affordable. She was able to purchase a home for our family to afford by the time my sister was born. And also had great public education. So I think that was a really strong foundation for growing up and being a career professional. Never knew that I was going to be in politics, but as a nurse, as an advocate for individuals, you got to know a lot of complex issues, public policy, how financing, the government really supports all of us as a community, and public health issues are one of those. So for me, being an advocate on one-on-one became advocacy for the community. Decided to step up those skills a bit and become an attorney, and actually spent 12 years in Olympia advocating for strong public health, when the Affordable Care Act came in Washington State to make sure it was fully implemented. And it was, the legislature at that time was also a very dynamic place, where you saw a lot of political conflict. And there, I learned that you had to be able to work with everyone with a wide variety of views, that you couldn't just talk to one party and expect to have gains in the long run. So I hope to bring to this position that experience in public policy. And I think representation matters. Back to the affordability issue, that's why my family's here in Burian, and I know that that's a value that our community has. And also, our community is also increasing in diversity, in terms of age, in terms of ethnic diversity. And I want to make sure that we include everybody in terms of how the city grows in its vision, and how we can achieve a one Burian for everyone. So, thank you very much.
Hi, everybody. My name's Kevin Schilling. I'm running for position four. I've been an area resident for a while, fourth generation in the area. My great-grandfather and my grandfather are buried up in Forest Lawn. I went to St. Francis of Assisi School down in Sears, and Aviation High School in the Highland School District. From there, I went to Wazoo and worked for the governor. At Wazoo, I personally lobbied and received some infrastructure money from the state legislature to improve state route 26, going to and from the university. Students were dying on the overland route over the winter time. And we got together and we said, this is unacceptable, we need to improve this. So we went to the legislature and got it done. I recently finished my dual master's degree in history and economics from Columbia University and the London School of Economics, and have now been working as the youth minister at St. Francis. So I came back home. I wanted to get involved in the community. Burian has, we've all seen it, an incredible coalition-building capability. We see an issue that needs to be solved, and we solve it. We work across differences, we come together, we say, we can fix this as a city, and we do it. I'm tired of hearing people bicker and complain about what is petty about a solution to a problem, and I'm ready to work together with anybody who wants to improve the city for working people, to keep it affordable for families, to make it a destination to want to move to, to let business thrive here, and to ensure that we can keep goods, people, and services moving in and out of the city. We're perfectly located to improve our position with the airport. We're perfectly located to attract excellent families and workers and people from all over the world to Burian. We have a wonderful diverse population. We have businesses that service everything from local, local family diners to manufacturing. I remember when this was all asphalt, and the only thing here was meal makers and the department store. And we've grown from asphalt to something wonderful. And I hope I can help do that this morning. Thank you.
My name is Lucy Quackoviac. I'm a current Burian City Council member. I'm running again because I feel my skills can be of value to this community, and I ask for your vote. Tonight, I live close by, and I walked here. Our planet is in trouble. I think we all need to start walking our walk. So as I walked here from my home, that's a mix of multifamily. We have low-income Section 8 folks, we have a wide variety, we have condos, a few single-family homes sprinkled in. I remember how much this community has changed. And like my opponent has mentioned, this used to be an asphalt LaMonts, this used to be the school district building, and there was meal makers. The city incorporated in 1993. We're a fairly young city. We still have changes that need to happen, but we have come a long ways. We put this street on a road diet, was four lanes, and people were actually, a few of them lost their lives on the street. We shrunk it down to two, created a very dynamic economic development downtown area that's fantastic. We created this community building, the park, and the living units around the park. Burian has a long ways to go. People are still dying. It isn't right that someone is at their desk working and they catch a random bullet and lose their life. We have grown as a city by 30,000 people, and our police force has remained the same. We need to do smart growth. This council has done a really creative job at leading the service. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sydney Moore. I'm running for position two. I want to start by apologizing to all of you for cutting it pretty close on time. I was dropping my two young children off at a sitter and hit a major roadblock. I gotta say, being a single mom, a working mom of two young kids, and a candidate for Burian City Council definitely keeps me on my toes. But just to give you a little background about me, I have been serving in leadership roles with nonprofits for the last decade. Currently, I serve on the Board of Trustees of the Burian Arts Association. I'm also a lead organizer with ACLU Burian People Power. I am a co-coordinator for the Burian White Center Ice Rapid Response Team. I'm also a volunteer with a variety of groups and causes, including Discover Burian, Community Visions Network. The list kind of goes on. So I believe my track record will show how dedicated I am to serving our city, to bettering our community, and that's my goal here, running as a candidate for Burian City Council. I have two kids I'm raising here. I'm not just working to benefit everyone else, I'm working to create a future for my own family as well. I see every day the impact our policy have on people from all walks of life. And my hope is to serve everyone from all the various diverse backgrounds that we have here in Burian. My priority is to not just improve the quality of life, but ensure that everyone's basic needs are met, shelter, food, healthcare, et cetera. I think that's the most universal staple for having a quality of life here, and we have too many people who go without. And so, those are my priorities. I want to build a brighter future for the city of Burian and everyone in it, and I'm asking all of you to help me do that. I am not offering a cure-all. I need your help.
Okay. I'm Joel Manning. I'm running for Burian City Council, position two, and I see that, hear that two-minute bill. It's coming quick tonight, so I'll try and be quick. I'm running for city council for reasons that are relatively simple and straightforward. I live here, I own a home here, 20-plus-year resident, and I love this community. One of the reasons Burian was founded was to have its own independence, and I'd like it to maintain that independence. One of the things we've seen in the past several years is a lot of outside interest kind of intruding into Burian politics. It used to be you would see a city council race spend maybe $5,000 between two candidates. And now you have thousands and thousands of dollars being spent by candidates just to get through a primary. And with all that money comes strength, right? People want something for that much money. And we saw this in the last election. There were tons of money poured into some candidates' campaigns. We had outside consulting firms that normally represent congressional candidates and state senators. And then we have council decisions being made now that are being fast-tracked without community involvement. The recent changes to the zoning to allow for the Tiny Homes project that just went by this week, some of you probably may be hearing about this for the first time, is an example of some of that outside influence, I think, coming in through that money into our town. And I'd like our town to be independent and make its own decisions. And that's pretty much the main reason why I'm running again, because I live here. I have 30 years of professional experience, primarily project management and executive-level management. I know how to solve problems, I know how to work with diverse groups of people to achieve goals. So I want to thank you all for coming out tonight. I hope this helps you make your decisions, and I hope I can earn your vote. Thank you.
So thank you very much, candidates, who all stuck to the time very nicely, which bodes well for the next round, that's 90 seconds. Before I proceed with the first question, I was remiss in not letting you know that Scott Schaefer from the B-Town Blog is here recording, live streaming, is that right, Scott?
No, just recording.
Just recording.
We had some issues.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be posted later.
That's right.
But he does a great service for us. He did it a couple of years ago, and we're just very thankful that Scott volunteered to do it again.
Thank you.
So, the first question, and this time, we'll start with Joel. How do you feel about the city of Burian proposing a 6% franchise fee and/or a 6% utility tax on water and sewer?
I don't like that idea. I mean, I believe something like this happened at Sea-Tac a couple of years back, where they did a similar tax like that. And I think all of those people who voted for that were booted, if I remember correctly, and may not. But you're taxing already a public utility again, so we're kind of double taxing. I understand we have to get money from somewhere, but no, I don't like that idea.
I'm gonna agree with my opponent here, that I think it, it is troublesome to put a burden on people who are just struggling to get by. So when you're talking about adding additional taxes to things like basic utilities, we have to be really, really mindful and really careful when we do that. I think we can consider something like franchise taxes and fees on big business here, because we do have a significant portion of our city that is supported by big business, and they should be paying to facilitate our city hosting them here and ensuring the people who live and work here can afford to do so and continue doing so while they're doing business in our city. But I would like to alleviate the pressure that makes Burian so hard to live in and so difficult to afford for families, because I think that's one of the biggest struggles that people in our city are having right now. So, again, I think we should be really careful about doing things like that when it impacts them in that way.
So utility taxes are one of the tools that the state gives cities to increase their revenue source, for revenue source. It's a regressive form of revenue, and so I do not support increasing utility taxes. We also have to be careful that we don't overburden our businesses. Burian could be considered a bedroom community. We've lost several large car dealers that brought in a lot of revenue. Our largest employers are the hospital and the school district. So we don't really have a huge base of businesses to rely on for revenue. So we have to diversify, and the community has to step up and support the different revenue sources that they're willing to pay as we move forward. Because as we move forward, we need to provide more resources for the folks who need a hand up. We're seeing that more and more. So I'm not in favor of the utility tax. We need to develop our business district, and rather than increase taxes on them, we need to have more businesses and larger businesses in our community, so that we can spread the revenue sources more equitably.
This is an interesting question, because it gets to, gets to ideas about growth of our city and where revenues are going to come from. The utility tax fits within a budget of multiple other taxes, so it forms the greater concept of where we want to go as a city. It's interesting that we're all sort of agreeing on a 6% tax increase being burdensome, because it could be. But if we want to do things like spend more on police or leave with services, money can't be made up in other areas without support from a tax base. I agree that growing business in the city of Burian is important, especially to bring in more revenues, and especially to continue providing services for people to grow our city and create infrastructure that supports new businesses and new people coming in. But I've spoken with the utility, the utility directors, and they understand that this is a decision that they need to make and that they need community input for. So it's up to the citizens to decide if they want to increase their utility costs and go to the commissioners and go to the utility district and say, I don't agree with this or I do agree with this. Because no matter the case, we need to ensure that our city expenditures keep up with growth and keep up with infrastructure needs. If we have a drop anywhere, something else is going to have to fill in where we require spending.
This issue of the fees, the first thing that comes to my mind is knowing that fees can be very limited, and it has to be invested for that specific purpose. What I'll say is that, number one, as a council member, you really need to look broadly in terms of how to solve this issue of revenue. I think it's very difficult for Burian, a city of its size, to be completely reliant and not consider some of the other options. For example, at the state level, there may be grants or loans to cities for infrastructure. We, I, you know, this is a reflection of the income inequality that we see statewide. And for me as a candidate, when I'm out there doorbelling and I'm talking to folks who live on just vastly different properties, you know, so mine, I cannot say that we have infrastructure issues compared to some people that I've talked to in Burian, where there used to be a rural space on septic systems that are failing and have porta-potties in their own backyard. And I find that is very unacceptable, and that's a public health hazard. One of the things that really strikes me, as I've worked on the state level and the city level, is in the city level, you are literally on the ground level, it is down to the sidewalk. And they might not be very sexy, but that is absolutely necessary for a council member, council, councils as a whole, to address. So I think we need to look broadly. I think it's important for someone to know that there may be other sources of revenue and to look into that. Thanks.
So to be specific, no and no. So I was on council for four years. I voted against a free tax increase, mainly because I'm a taxpayer, and I don't want to pay more. So my questions to staff would be, what is it for? Why do we need it now? We didn't need it last year. What's happened? What's changed? What can, what can we cut? Is there things we can cut? What other options are available? So it isn't just a matter of that, hey, we need this money for this thing. There's lots of things that we need money for all the time. And I look at it as a family. When you're on a budget, you live within your means. If you're doing more and you don't have the money for it, you don't do it now. You save and you wait. The city borrowed money to do the First Avenue project, and they're trying to do the second portion of it. There is grant money available, but anytime we do a road project, we're applying for every grant that there is. And we're in competition with all the other cities. And as a very small city with a small staff, a contract city, we don't have the capability to be as competitive on those grants as other cities that are much more capable, with much larger staffs and a lot better revenue stream to do that work.
Okay, we're going to start the second question with Lucy, and go this way, please. What is your plan to fight the increased crime in Burian?
Thank you. So crime is on the rise, and to fight it, it's a multi-pronged approach. So, one, we have to engage citizens, just like we're doing tonight. We need to gather together, we have a block watch program. We need more of those, we need people, eyes and ears. We also need a healthier, more robust police department. So as I mentioned before, our city has grown, almost doubling in size, and our police department has stayed the same. So our police are working harder than most police, and they're, I was just sharing with a friend the other day, I said, you know, when I drive through Burian, I see people talking on their cell phones, people aren't wearing their seat belts, cars are parked the wrong direction, so just on the surface, things aren't being enforced. Makes me wonder, if you go one level down, where people's homes and apartments are being broken into, what's the response times? People are dying in Burian. They're getting hit by stray bullets. It's not right. So we need to increase our police department. We also need to engage the community more and become more active.
There's a multi-dimensional layer of crime in the city of Burian. It's not just property crime, it's not just gang violence, there's lots of different styles of crime that occur. The Burian Police Department has a solid response time. If you look at the public safety crime data, the police on average respond to a crime in six minutes. The police on average are overworked for the amount of crime they're responding to. But overall, the city of Burian needs to develop, and they have been developing and working on, two different styles of approach. We need a long-term approach that deals with, that deals with crime that could be happening, so we need to get youth in youth development and youth mentoring and youth training programs, specifically youth that could be drawn into gang issues or drawn into other opportunities that relate to crime. We need to develop youth programs, youth development strategies that get them into job training, and other avenues that would not lead them to crime. But then we also need police response times for crime that happens right now. There's two different prongs to crime. We need long-term investment and short-term investment. Crime in Burian, there's a perception of it happening all over the place, every day, all the time. But if we bleed with an element of fear, we cannot work to build coalitions with community groups and faith organizations and schools and families and neighborhoods that lead to effective improvements towards our quality of life. to effective improvements towards our quality of life that get students and young people into jobs in college and get people who need help right now into those services.
I think that the police, we need to support their current method in terms of how do they strengthen those relationships with the community so they always have antennas and feelers about what's going on so that they can anticipate areas of the city where there may be crime bubbling. And I completely agree with the candidates to the right of me in terms of response time. I know that data is collected about what crimes happen where and we need to be really focused on if there are specific types of activities that go up, how can we respond to that? The other piece, and again, I go back to doorbelling, asking our neighbors about, what does public safety mean to you? It doesn't necessarily mean police response, but it is those small things that can lead to injuries and death. There isn't enough sidewalks on busier streets where I want to take my kids to school. It's really dark in this alley and I know that people are afraid of being mugged there. There isn't good traffic coordination at this particular light. Are we sure the lights are coordinated enough so that people aren't getting into car accidents? People asking for speed bumps? So there's a whole array of what I think our community feels is public safety. We definitely need to respond to all of that. And also, when we talk about our police force, really balance that with all of the other public safety responses that we're responsible for.
So policing is extremely expensive. It's a quarter million dollars for a single officer for a year. We were able, as a council, to add two police officers when I was on council without raising taxes. We used federal grant money and we had saved as a city. We had reserves. We had some extra revenue from cutting expenses. I recently learned that the gang unit has been restarted, but they only have two officers, a sergeant and a detective. They really would like to foresee that cities would dedicate an officer time for each of the cities surrounding this area that are having gang problems. They would like to see an officer dedicate time from each precinct. They would like to see programs in the schools deterring kids from joining gangs. And so all of these things are expensive. I do talk to people as well and say they're afraid to go to Safeway at night. They don't feel safe in some of our parks and they don't go out at night to walk anywhere, especially alone. So there's a perception that crime is on the rise and people feel victimized and they're afraid. So we need to do something and we need to be careful with the budget doing it, but we can do it.
I agree. There's definitely short-term solutions and long-term solutions. First, I would start with talking to law enforcement. I don't get in a patrol car every night. So I'm going to start with the people that actually have to do the job and follow their suggestions for what they need to be able to do their job and free them up to do that job. One of the things, also, you have to work with resources that you have. King County did promise a reinstated and fully-staffed gang unit. And that was quite a while ago when we had tragic shooting deaths as a result of gang violence here. You know, beat the drum. Call a press conference. There's nothing wrong with demanding, hey, where's the gang unit we were promised? Again, use the resources you have. And in those cases, the squeaky wheel gets the grease. So again, use the resources we have and listen to law enforcement and their advice for what they need to be able to do to do their job.
So I'm going to agree that we should be listening to law enforcement because they are the ones who know what they need the most support-wise. I was sitting in on a Human Services Commission meeting not too long ago and Burian's own Chief of Police Ted Bo gave a report to the city on what we can do to help support our law enforcement officers. And he said, "The number one thing we can do is focus on housing." So our officers are not spending their time chasing homeless people through the park or responding to nuisance calls and can actually address heavy crime in areas where there is violent crime ongoing. So addressing the underlying causes of crime is how we make long-term impacts and densen in that. We can start by doing things like acknowledging what causes children to enter into gangs and what prevents that. Well, keeping kids in school and making sure they have strong family support is one great way to keep them from getting into gangs. How do we do that? Addressing poverty is a wonderful way. We have hundreds of kids in the Highline School District who drop out of school because they have to get jobs to help support their families. We have family members who work multiple jobs so they can't be home to give their kids support. Those kids go by the wayside and enter into gangs. You've got crime there. Economic-based crimes, people who steal often do it because they're desperate. They don't have any other means or they don't feel they have any other means to meet their needs or their family's needs, et cetera. So let's look at the root causes and listen to law enforcement.
So there's not to overwork Andrea here with the microphone. We will start with Joel for the next one. And this one is about our parks. Our population is growing. We have more people that need open space. What is your plan to increase open space in Burian?
Well, you know, parks take a ton of money. And right now, I would say we are, you know, it's tight financially to talk about building parks. You know, citing a park, picking a location for a park and the cost involved in building a park. Honestly, right now, I don't necessarily see as a top priority, given the finances that the city has. I mean, we're about to run out of the money that we got from the annexation north Burian. And I don't know if we've necessarily found a way to really backfill that money that's going to soon run out. I would love a park. I would love many more parks. But that is not a cheap expense.
So first off, I want to say one of the things I love most about Burian is our amazing parks and how incredible they are, how many we have. I think you can always use more parks. We need free space for people to play, for kids to play. And I think that one way that we can focus on getting funding to support those projects is by getting a grant writer for the city, which we currently do not have because there is a lot of funding out there that could be accessible to us that we're not even touching on looking for. We're not looking out for what other outside sources can grant us that funding. So why not? Why aren't we? If we get a grant writer, that position should be able to pay for itself. I think it's a small expense compared to the money that we could get for parks, for infrastructure, for all kinds of amazing things. So I think that having a grant writer on staff would be one of the biggest booms for our city in terms of outside funding that we could be collecting in on.
Burian's parks are one of our gems. It starts with Seavers Park and House councils have done a fabulous job of restoring it. It takes a lot of money to not only start up a park and build a park, but also maintain a park. So we need to do a better job of maintaining what we have. As we grow, there are some areas in the city that have been identified as needing a park, that they don't have a park. As we grow, one possibility is that we could tie a fee in with new development to start creating funding for the parks to serve those areas of growth. And that's already in place with some of the multifamily housing. They have a new fee where you have to have so much common space. And if you aren't able to meet that, you can actually put it towards, there's a fund for parks. So those are some of the possibilities. And I know that there are areas in our town that are lacking parks, that desperately need parks. We also have to maintain our parks. And just one example is Forterra came to us to talk about things that we could do to help climate change and minimizing those effects. And one of them is taking care of our trees in our parks and removing invasive species. A lot of our parks need a lot of help. So I encourage us all to help volunteer to take care of parks.
I don't think anyone's here is going to say they hate parks. Parks have scientifically proven to increase happiness levels in wherever they are at. I love parks. I think my families love parks. Everyone in this room loves parks. A significant portion of our budget has been moved into parks and rec development and improvements. I continue that and prioritize that. As a couple people have said, the parks that we have in the city of Burian are not necessarily geographically distributed to occupy space where the majority of families and young people are. As a majority-family city, I think we should be looking at not just park selection locations, but also how to improve green space overall in our city. We can make 153rd look like 152nd. We can plant trees everywhere. We can work to improve the quality of life by greening our spaces. And that would make it more beneficial for people to just go outside, to take a walk, to be with neighbors. As a frequent park visitor, I go to Lake Burian Park in Seavers a lot, but also Hazel Valley Park periodically. We need to improve our parks. Specifically Eagle Landing, which is a very micro-issue for Seavers people. Eagle Landing Park should be improved and should be renovated and fixed. Hazel Valley Park should be greened. We should be working with our neighboring cities to do improvements to green spaces that border Des Moines, Normandy Park, SeaTac, Light Center. We have the ability to. I think we should.
I'm in strong agreement of preserving the parks that we have and make sure that they're safe and accessible. That's something that people have told me as I've gone about doorbelling. And as we, when we have opportunities for redevelopment in the city, definitely make those walkable spaces and that people can enjoy the outdoors, not necessarily being at a park, but just going to and from restaurants and stores, having a park-like experience, I think, is really important, particularly with all the health issues that we know that's happening now in terms of obesity and chronic disease. There's a really strong health impact if we were to think creatively about how to get people outside in the fresh air, moving and preserving our green spaces.
So I was on council when we opened the dog park. And it was a public-private partnership that actually made that Harvard. That's one way that I think is very helpful when people have an interest in a community and actually work toward raising money to help make that happen. Got partnerships from other businesses in the community to help contribute to it. Councilmember Tosta and I were there on the day that they officially opened it and did the ribbon cutting. And it was really exciting to see how a group of people came together to get something done that they really had a vision for and a plan to make it happen. So I think that with the limited budget that Burian has and the, you know, the challenges that Burian has in gaining more revenue to do more green spaces and open spaces, it would be great to see communities come together like happened with the dog park and get a plan and maybe for the cherry tree that's on the corner that Lucy had talked about in the past, to preserve that area and create a park there. That's something that's been sitting idle for a while. We worked on making sure that that tree could be saved and that that lot could be cleaned because there were hazards in the soil, just to be able to have that as a future park space. So.
Thank you. I think we'll start. Yeah, I think we'll start with Kevin. Put him on the hot seat.
Thanks, Lois.
You're quite welcome. There is talk of a homeless shelter for men in Burian. Do you support this? And if so, how should it be funded?
So a wonderful thing about how localities have been supporting homeless populations in Burian and around Burian is through partnerships with faith-based organizations, nonprofit, non-governmental organizations, through information sharing, and that starts with the city, I think. We have a population of people who are homeless. We have a population of people who are close to being homeless. We have the ability to help at whichever point in someone's life they're in. Mary's Place is a wonderful organization that works to house families, women, homeless children. I think Burian has the opportunity to work with other organizations like a men's shelter to be a central location for homeless individuals in the city. This problem is not going to go away. These people are not going to go away. People who are homeless need assistance to get into permanent housing. They need assistance to get jobs. They need assistance to get into rehabilitation services. The city has the possibility to be a conduit of information and a partner for nonprofits and non-governmental organizations to continue advocating and supporting people who need help. And I think if we can help, we should help. But this also, this regional homelessness issue, this national homelessness issue, needs to be supported at the federal level and state level, and I'll work to be an advocate for that.
Thank you. So I think there's, as Lois mentioned before, most of these issues have a long-term solution and a short-term solution. So the long-term solution, as Burian develops as a community and a city, is to develop our own housing authority. So we would have Burian Housing Authority, like King County Housing Authority, Seattle Housing Authority, Renton Housing Authority, providing subsidized housing. I think that's critical for any community. And that's where a men's shelter would fit into, to help folks find the services they need right here. In the meantime, because we're resource limited and faith-based organizations are pulling together, and we have Mary's Place and we have Hospitality House, we're leading with services to help folks that are in need. And we're finding shelters already in existence. So rather than recreating with the wheel, we're already helping folks find the services they need throughout King County. So I think it's going to be a regional solution, a state solution. And then Burian, as we grow, we need to start planning to develop a housing authority so that we can help with that subsidized housing.
So I absolutely support a shelter. Single men are the biggest demographic of homeless people that we have in this area in general, and they are woefully underserved. I spent a lot of time volunteering at the severe weather shelter during the big storm last winter, and I will tell you, I am dreading this winter because it was devastating to witness people coming in on the streets. I literally pulled people out of the snow at three and four o'clock in the morning, people coming in with hypothermia, beginning stages of frostbite injuries, the list goes on. We need to address this problem now. It is urgent. We are failing people. I think that, as I mentioned earlier, grants are a great option. I want to echo that we have incredible nonprofits that are doing great work here. We need to better support them. We're working to do that now, but I feel like we have not prioritized this issue as much as it deserves because we still have people out on our streets. And guess what? Winter's coming and I don't want to be pulling people out of the snow at three and four o'clock in the morning again, but I'm probably going to. So we need to prioritize the issue. And you know what? If we want to and we feel like we can't get enough funding through grants, through budgeting what we've got, let's consider putting a tax raise to the people and seeing if they vote to put a little bit more money towards a shelter because I know that homelessness is considered the biggest issue in our city. Let's do something about it.
I definitely support private nonprofit organizations like Mary's Place. I definitely support the city, directing people who need help to services available. Just as a blanket statement, do you support a city-funded shelter? I would have to say no to that, only because I don't know what the details of that are. That's just, it's kind of a nebulous idea. Obviously, I support the idea of people having shelter. I don't think anyone kind of like parks. Nobody's really against that. But the devil's in the details. What does that mean? We do not have a huge, according to the one-night count, a huge population of homeless people now. So I would say let's keep directing people to those services that are already available until we can have a better idea of what exactly this plan is.
I think this issue. I think this.
I think this issue is illustrative of the importance of homelessness prevention. For example, if there are failures in our addiction process, we need to understand what those are so that people at risk for homelessness don't automatically fall in there needlessly. I think the issue of homelessness, when I doorbell, is a number-one issue on everyone's mind. What I really appreciate is people want a compassionate response. And I think this is one of those issues, again, that is pervasive regionally, that it would be good to explore with our neighboring cities because when we're in forums and I reach out and talk about, so what are issues hitting your city? It's basically the same thing, particularly when it comes to homelessness and affordable housing. What I've seen in cities and other part of the state when they do get together and say, okay, let's share the responsibility of the needed resources to house and shelter people who need it. So there may be a Mary's Place in the city like we have in Burian, a very close neighboring city may have a men's shelter. And then you can coordinate on making sure there's transportation and services for those individuals. And at the same time, make sure there's coordinated services so that they have a way to transition out of shelters and back to independent living. And I think it's also really important to have that community input around this issue as well and get ideas about public-private partnerships. There may be opportunity in the Housing Trust Fund at the state level and explore all those.
So Burian is one of the poorest cities in the county, if not the poorest city in King County. So we do not have large revenue sources. We don't have social service nets. We don't have a lot of things that other cities have a lot more of, unavailable resources to support housing for homelessness. So when Utah tackled homelessness, it was a partnership between the Mormon Church, the state, the counties, faith-based groups, nonprofits. And they all got together with a plan that worked for seventy percent of the chronically homeless, which was a small portion of one of the homeless categories. It worked because they had a plan and they all worked together. It was coordinated and collaborative. We don't have anything like that going on here. We have spotty cities trying to handle little bits of the problem here and there. We've got shelters over here, we've got food program over there, we've got pantries over here and clothing bank over there. This is not going to work. If the issue of homelessness is going to be changed in a positive direction, it needs to be a statewide, region-wide, county-wide focused effort. And it has to start with the source of the problems, addressing those, and case managers for every person that goes through the system.
So I'm going to have Debbie hang on to the microphone to start the next question. I want to tell the audience that it is not too late to turn in a question. If any of the comments has sparked a question, just make sure you get a card. You have Laura right over there? Yep, so just go over and get a card in or a truck, and Andrea will come and pick it up for you. So starting again with Debbie, please. What would you say is the biggest problem our city is dealing with currently?
I think it's the upcoming budget deficit that Joel talked about a little bit. It's the sunsetting of the annexation tax credit. And potentially is why some of these new fees and taxes are being considered to help offset some of that. So like I said before, there are ways to manage the budget, to cut costs, to look for ways to be a lean city again, do more contract work rather than the large staff that we've developed, maybe get a loan to do some road repairs rather than try to use our budget to pay for those as we go, as we did with First Avenue loans that can be paid off gradually. So I think the budget is the biggest problem that Burian's facing that's coming up. It's coming up soon. It's going to start in 2020. So we don't hear a lot of discussion about that, but as somebody who helped try to manage the budget and got a big reserve going on as a council member that helped reduce our loan fees that we had. By the way, having reserves gave us a better bond rating. It meant that our city was healthier when it came to borrowing money, which is very important for a city. Reserves are a big issue that we have to try to work toward doing a better job with. So that's my opinion.
I define the largest problem facing Burian based on the feedback I get when I'm out there talking to people at their doors. And today, it's homelessness and affordable housing. So Burian has a huge opportunity in its Vision 2030 to look at how are we going to achieve the needed housing stock that it's committed to building so that we can draw people into this region? And when you have people live here, that necessarily supports economic development in the city because there will be services needed. It would support a more lively arts culture here. Young families want to come here with and experience that here. So I think that is a great thing, and we'd already talked about homelessness. I think that, again, we need to think really broadly about what's driving these issues and the need for Burian. It's not just Burian's budget because I think most of you already know, the state of Washington is dead last in terms of its revenue approach. It is completely unfair, and it's not going to be sustainable. So we have to not only look at what Burian's needs. Actually, Burian is a part of a giant patchwork in the state, and we need to make connections with our local officials, with Congress, and just be really loud about the needs Burian as an example. We're not unique in this in that for our growing population and the needs we have, we need more fair revenue. So I think those two go hand in hand.
I also hear a lot from people whose doors I've knocked on. I've knocked on over seven thousand doors, and one of the things I hear the most is affordability. How am I going to be able to stay in Burian? Or how are we going to attract new people? What's important for the city to focus on is policies that make it possible for people who don't make a lot of money to be able to stay in the city of Burian and also to attract new people here. This is a little bit of a divide we have in this city. We have people who don't want new people, and we have people who say, yes, come, we need you, we want you. We value what you bring here. And I think in order for us to maintain that course of being a place for people who've lived here for generations, but also being a place for people who are new to Washington, new to the city of Burian, we need to ensure that apartments are available, that multifamily housing is available, that starter homes are available, that people can live and work here, or they can live here and work somewhere else. They can have a family here, they can send their kids to a great school. The only way to have great schools is to have good property tax base. We need to ensure that people know that Burian is not only open for business, but open to have the best and the brightest living here. And if we can continue being an attractive city for people to stay and for new people to come, our problems won't look as huge as they do. We can start those new businesses. We can get kids into great schools. We can send them off to college, and we can make Burian a place for everybody who wants to be here.
So can you repeat the question, please? So what do you feel is the most important problem facing Burian currently?
Thank you. So I've heard, as we've discussed this with each other, that growth. But underneath growth, it's the budget. So every city has to have a balanced budget. And to manage the growth that's coming, and there's, there's no question that growth is coming, we have to do smart growth. Along with balancing our budget, we need a council that is wise. We need a diverse council that understands how to keep a balanced budget and how to do parliamentary procedure, how to run a city. So I bring that with the wisdom and the experience that I have as a council member and a past mayor. So the budget, we have, like someone else mentioned, we have constraints on the state. I think we have to be aware that hopes and dreams of being the squeaky wheel might sound good and it's fun to protest. But we live next to the port. We've been fighting the port and putting millions of dollars down the drain to fight the port. And we still have planes flying overhead, and we still have more and more noise happening. So we have to fight regionally, but we also have to take care of our community and lead. And right now, with our innovative human services that we're doing, other communities are looking at us and saying, hey, how is Burian doing this, leading with services? So we're actually setting some new paths.
So I will echo what many others up here have said, which is that in talking to the people of our city, doorbelling or having conversations out in our community, the biggest problem that I have heard from others about, that they feel is the biggest problem, is homelessness. My opinion, homelessness is a symptom of an underlying problem. The biggest problem I feel we face in the city is poverty. Burian's poverty rate is well above the state average. We have more than fifteen percent of people in this city living at or below the poverty line. We have to address that. Poverty impacts everything from our overall health to our crime rates to how long kids can stay in school. There is so many aspects of this that impact our daily lives for everyone. Affordability for housing is a major issue here. We need to tackle that. Wages are another big issue. If you don't have enough money in your pocket to pay your rent or to buy food, what are you supposed to do? I think homelessness, again, is a major issue. Preventing homelessness, getting people out of the cycle of homelessness. I'd like to make sure we have stronger support systems for the people who are facing housing insecurity, homelessness. I want to make sure we have affordable housing, and that includes fighting for rent control, which is a statewide issue. It's not purely local, but we can address these at local levels with tenants' rights, et cetera. And I do want to raise our minimum wage so it is a livable wage, so people who work here can afford to live here, can afford to support themselves and their families.
I'm going to go, you know, there's a couple of things that I would say are the top priorities, but I mean, the budget is the primary thing. We have to solve the budget problems. And I agree with Kevin, we need to be an attractive city. We need people to come. We need the tax base. We need a healthy business community. We need to attract businesses here so we can have sales tax. All these things that we talked about doing, all require money. And right now, we're kind of like that college kid that's a year in and the parents are about to cut off the checks, right? So we have a bill coming due, and you know, that money's going to be taken away in 2020. So we already have a, you know, a looming shortfall coming. And then all these other things, I mean, that we want to do, they all come with, you know, with an invoice. So the budget would be the, I would say, the top priority.
Okay, so we'll start with Lucy this time. And what are your visions for Boulevard Park? That's the new area north of Burian, for those of you that aren't familiar with that area.
Yes, Boulevard Park is a wonderful new portion of Burian that was incorporated recently. I have some dear friends who live in Boulevard Park, and I get to spend some time there. So I know the challenges that they face. Safe walkways to school, they just lost their grocery store. So Boulevard Park needs to have more attention focused on that area. They need to have their infrastructure improved. They did some overlays on street improvements, but they also need, I think, that Sophia, you mentioned that some folks still have septic systems that are failing. So we need to figure out how to tap into the grant resources that the state provides, help people shift their septic systems that are failed and connect to the sewer system. And that takes coordinating communities so that it's effective and the whole street shifts over to sewer. So it's a public health issue. So making Boulevard Park a healthier community and a more robust community, actually having our Economic Development Department try to relocate another grocery store there. It's not the same with a full-fledged grocery store that you can go in and buy bread, milk, groceries. I've been in there many times with the family that I visit with, and now it's a dollar store, I believe, so it's sad.
This question touches on a lot of concerns around incorporation and bringing people into an overall city culture that's really interesting to me. I'd first like to say my favorite teriyaki is in Boulevard Park, Bucks Teriyaki, the best. I'd also like to say Duane's Garden Patch has the best apples in Burian, so go support Duane's, those are both in Boulevard Park. Boulevard Park was incorporated in the annexation, and when I doorbell there and I meet people there, I hear that they've not felt that they've been heard, that it's been difficult for them to feel a part of a city culture in Burian because there's been too much focus, I'm sorry to say, on one hundred and fifty-second and one hundred and fifty-third. We need to look at Burian as a whole city and as a regional interconnection to our neighboring cities as well. We have a lot of traffic that goes through Boulevard Park, getting to Sea-Tac, getting to Renton, getting to Seattle. A lot of driving goes through there, not a lot of transit. I'd like to see improved access to transit in Boulevard Park for working people. I'd like to see improved investments in working on zoning in Boulevard Park so we can maybe incentivize more multifamily, multi-use zoning in Boulevard Park. Boulevard Park has the capacity to be attractive to people who work in Seattle, who commute downtown every day, but also for people across Burian to go to have a great dinner, go grocery shopping, and feel connected to one another.
As I've doorbell Boulevard Park, many of the candidates have already spoken, have touched on all of the highlights that voters there have talked about. It is attractive because it's an affordable place. I think there is a lot of potential to have, to attract more small businesses to serve that neighborhood that are there in Boulevard Park. But they are an example of how in incorporation, we've been really slow to respond to that really basic infrastructure. So that definitely is the priority for me, to work with that neighborhood.
At one point, it was discussed at council that a community recreation center should be brought into Boulevard Park. I know that the city staff had plans for one, that they drew up in thinking of the annex, that that would be rebuilt. But there are a lot of families in that area and a lot of children, and very little recreational opportunities for them. So, and I do know too, that there are safety issues in that area where kids do not have sidewalks to walk on. And some of those areas are overflowed by loud jets, so kids can't hear cars that are coming up on them. Those are concerns I've heard in the past. It's safer places for kids to walk to school and walk around in their neighborhoods. So again, it comes back to, it'd be nice if Burian had a big bag of money. So I know that Samamish was able to buy a new community center at thirty-three million dollars out of pocket with what they had in reserves, where Burian has needed one and wanted one for a couple of decades now, trying to get partnerships with Boys and Girls Club and others to get one started in Burian. We had one, we lost it to Sea-Tac. So these are great opportunities for families, children, and seniors in our community that we can't provide because we don't have the resources. We don't have the seemingly, the ability to make those partnerships. We need to change that and make those things happen.
So I think we've heard from all the candidates up here of many problems that face Boulevard Park and that surrounding area. Being a food desert is one of them, losing their primary source of fresh groceries. That's a huge issue. Most people have to come into town on Safeway and hit First Avenue, and that check can be burdensome to people, especially those who struggle with a lack of transportation. Infrastructure needs, another big issue that we need to address there. There is a lack of sidewalks, even around the parks that they do have up there. And integrating them into the culture of our city is another big issue. I've heard from a lot of people out there, they feel very isolated, they feel very cut off, and they do feel that we put a lot of focus here on our downtown core and not enough on the surrounding areas and the outerlying areas in our community. One thing that we've talked about at the Burian Arts Association board meetings has been how we can integrate our community activities and outreach to incorporate places like Boulevard Park so we can host events there, so we can engage the community there. And I think that we do need to be listening and doing outreach to find out what people there need, how we can best address that. So being mindful. So, being mindful about the community's needs, listening and acknowledging that even though they are a little further out than our downtown central district, we should be meeting the needs of that area in our city.
I would agree with most of what's been said here. And definitely, you talked to residents of Boulevard Park, there's definitely a feeling of, you know, disenfranchisement sometimes. And there are definitely things that need to be improved there, the food desert thing. I mean, obviously, if you don't have food, if you can access, if you don't have a supermarket in your area, everyone knows that kind of diminishes quality of life. And I would agree with the sidewalks. Sewer and water is obviously important. That's a health concern. There's a lot of work to do there and there's definitely that feeling there, and that community needs to be better engaged.
Okay, we will start the next round with Sophia. And this one, the questioner called out one specific road, but I think it is indicative of a problem on many of our roads. So, the question is, who do you feel could pay for improvements to Des Moines Memorial Drive? Impact fees or what? But I think the broader question is increased traffic on many of our major roads. And how do we pay for that?
I just know, being a candidate, because you have the privilege of being invited to numerous workshops and there were issues, is transportation funding can be a bit complex, at least it is for me. So, I think that this is one of those things that, yes, there is a transportation issue that Burian needs to grapple with. When you have growing population, there's more people that we need to move daily on a regular basis when I'm out there. Doorbelling, that there's people who tell me what the obstacles are all the time, whether it's a safety issue or a noise issue or whether or not there's not enough transit that gets to really dense neighborhoods. So, all of those things that need to be addressed. And in terms of, did you ask a funding issue as well? Just really looking at the array of federal and state and local funding for transportation. And as you know, transportation also is a regional issue as well. And that's, it also behooves us to look into what are some opportunities there so that we can leverage that work to benefit Burian.
So, when it comes to roads, it's the second most expensive item in the budget, beside right behind policing, which is half the budget of Burian. So, roads are very expensive. If we do a, Burian does a slurry seal to preserve the roads. It isn't a perfect repair, but it keeps the roads from slipping into such disrepair that their replacement, that is ten times more expensive, can be delayed. We're responsible for our city streets. Burian has to pay for the road repair and improvement on those state routes or the responsibility of the state and so forth. So, that has to come from our budget. Again, like I said earlier, we're competing for grant money for these special improvements all the time. These are difficult grants to get. And we have unsafe routes to school. We've been applying for grants for, for five, six, seven years in a row and not been in the running for it. So, when we're talking about to increasing affordable housing in the city, you're talking about increasing density. You have to plan for road capacity for those kinds of things, for parking. It doesn't increase the revenues very much in the city and it does cost a lot in services. So, when we're talking about providing affordable housing for the region, we should be talking about other areas that have not taken affordable housing throughout the last number of decades that are way behind on meeting the targets. Burian's way ahead. We need high-quality development. So, Becky's going to take the microphone to Joe.
Well, it's definitely our responsibility. I'd love to be able to go with Debbie's big bag of money, but I don't believe we can use that as an option. Obviously, we have to go for grant money wherever we can find money. Do I have a clear answer right now? Where is this amount of money we're gonna find, dig out? No, I don't have that answer right now. But the roads are our responsibility. We are getting bigger. That is gonna become a bigger and bigger cost, so we're gonna have to start finding that money.
So, I want to bring it back to a grant writer. It would be incredibly helpful for us in situations like this. It's great that we are applying for grants, but we don't have somebody who makes that a primary focus. So, undoubtedly, there is a lot of money out there that we are potentially missing out on. We know that infrastructure around the city is a major issue and especially things like sidewalks. Out on Des Moines Memorial, there are a lot of areas that could really use a sidewalk and they're lacking. And I've heard from a lot of people out there where they feel it's really dangerous to be out on those roads, especially in areas with families, with kids, near schools, et cetera. So, I think prioritizing that issue would be really smart for us. It would be a real, be really beneficial to our public safety in terms of our pedestrians. And I think that, you know, one of the things I've heard from people out there is there are a lot of speeders on Des Moines Memorial, even racing going on. And they'd like to see more enforcement of our traffic laws and potentially make some money from that that could go back into making our roads a little safer out there. So, there are options for us to explore, but we have to make sure we prioritize them because if we're not taking note of these issues, then nothing will ever get done.
So, we have hopes and dreams, grant writers, pots of money. But the reality is that the city works very hard with what they have and they do apply for many, many, many grants. And so, the roads are a reflection of our budget. So, if you drive on First Avenue, 928th, the road is in terrible condition. I just recently talked to the Public Works Director and said, when, you know, what's, when is the road gonna be fixed? Well, we have to let it get even worse so that we'll get more grant money. So, what we need to do is we need to develop our revenue source again. So, it's wishful thinking if everything can be solved by grants, but it isn't gonna happen. We need to develop our revenue source. Some folks have mentioned property values going up. That's where we also need to have a diverse housing stock. And so, we do need to commit to some subsidized housing to keep that affordability range in there. We also have to have a more robust budget, a more diverse downtown. We need to have some larger businesses coming in to provide a revenue base.
I think Des Moines Memorial is a wonderful local, regional connector for Burian to Des Moines, to Nori Park, C-TAC. We have a beautiful road that all of our cities drive on. So, in order to repair it, we need to work collaboratively with the state to do so. But this question really gets at two issues that Burian is working on right now, congestion and transit. I don't know about you, but I've noticed that there are lots more cars driving in the center of Burian than have in the past, which tells me we need to work on incentivizing and creating more transit options, more local transportation options, making the city more capable of handling bicyclists, handling pedestrians, but generally, we need to be working on advocating for more transit. I was not happy with what Burian got with the ST3 sound transit allocation. I think the small mighty amount of $250,000 for a bus study is not what we need right now. We need more. The city of Burian is growing. We are not just some podunk town in the middle of nowhere King County that shouldn't be the center of attention for our representatives and our county council members. We should be advocating for regional solutions through, for transit to get our streets less congested, make people drive a little less and to ensure that our streets remain safe and available without congestion.
So, hang on to the microphone, Kevin, because you're next. How would you support the arts in Burian?
I love this question. The arts is where I got my start in involvement in Burian. I was a Highliner. I was a Burian Actors Theater back in the day when it was BLT. I performed in countless productions. I've worked hard to advocate for the arts in the city of Burian and Seattle and the state of Washington. I was a founding youth member of the Seattle International Film Festival Youth Committee. I was the founding development intern for the Fifth Avenue's Theaters Rising Star Project. I was the managing director of the Young American Theater Company. I've been involved in a plethora of arts and theater and film organizations in the area. Making Burian a center of cultural investment is just a smart thing to do. There's talk right now and interest in incentivizing a cultural arts district over here that would bring more money in to create development specifically for arts and culture. I love it. Let's do it. Why not? Arts brings more money. It brings more talent. It improves the quality of life. Arts education and arts opportunities give young people the ability to be creative and develop skills that they might not normally be developing. It brings people together, sharing narrative, sharing production, sharing an experience with someone is really gratifying. So, I'm all for it.
Lucy.
Thank you. So, when we're creating our new vision for the city, arts, the arts community in our community is very, very active and vocal. And that was one of the pieces that was critical to have in our statement. We already have a very strong arts community. It will only get stronger. So, when there's art on the agenda, I'm supportive. I'm concerned that sometimes there's a select group of artists that are getting more support than others. So, we see a plethora of one type of mural work right now and I've asked to see if we can get a more diverse selection of murals out in our community. We have some wonderful ways of integrating art into new developments. So, we can see with Merrill Gardens and the Maverick, as you drive around those blocks, those windows were part of the agreement for development, the art in those buildings. So, I think Burian has art in its veins. We have some new electrical boxes, the coverings. I'm not sure if anyone's noticed those, but they're beautiful. And there's a wide range of different arts on those. And so, I'd just love to see us continue moving out, seeing us engage our youth and schools more, having contests. I was a little disappointed. Thank you.
So, as I mentioned earlier, I currently serve on the board of the Burian Arts Association, which is a nonprofit that is focused on enriching the lives of people in Burian through the arts. And I think that we do have an incredibly robust artist community here. It is amazing. Never ceases to thrill and awe. I think that we can work on strengthening our coordination with our artists and our nonprofits that do focus on the arts. We currently partner through the city with various nonprofits. I think we should be strengthening those partnerships and expanding on them because obviously, art makes life better for everyone in our town. It just does. So, let's look at that. I also completely support investing in a cultural arts district. Obviously, that's something that could be a huge benefit for our downtown area. And as mentioned earlier, I think we need to expand our cultural and artistic ongoings to include some of the outer lying areas in our city that haven't been reached as much as our downtown core. So, let's work with the artists that we have. Let's work with the nonprofits that are already doing these things and just continue to support these efforts however we possibly can.
I agree. We have a wonderful art community. There's one part, one area, I would say, and it's my own personal passion. So, I would like to see this increase is music. I would like to see more live music venues, more places where you could go see music, more youth music programs. Again, maybe that's selfish because I'm an musician, but I would like to see more of that. I'd like to see annual music festivals. That just seems to be the one piece that's not as quite developed as I would like to see it, is a greater influence of music in our community.
So, Debbie's going to be next.
So, when my kids were in school, I was an art docent. I volunteered with the schools to do those projects with the kids. And it was a wonderful time. And it was great to see young people seeing and knowing and understanding different kinds of materials that they could use and things they could create and how each one of them was creative and unique in their own way. And that was wonderful. So, some of those kids have grown up and one of them, last year, graduated from Highline and decided to take art as his, you know, his primary focus for his college. And that was pretty exciting because he was somebody who ended up in tears in one of the classrooms, crying over the watercolor, actually putting a hole right through the paper. But he changed his whole attitude and outlook about it. I also have been a musician in a symphony, so I understand the importance of music and culture in the community. So, I know that it is something that is a very easy way to be expressive and beautify our community without a lot of, you know, outside effort. Because we do have the town right here in Burian. We've got the creativity right here. And we have a wide variety of different venues that people enjoy expressing themselves in. So, I think we're lucky.
I really value the arts as well. As a person who learned the violin through public school, it always made me sad that that's not readily available. So, for arts, I really think it's important to be accessible. So, there's a huge range of art and cultural experiences you can, all the way to operas and symphonies, which are accessible to some, but there are so many creative ways in which Burian can nurture and develop and recruit more art here in the city. What I really appreciate actually with Burian, and I've lived in a different city as a student, is that how cities like Burian with a central core can really use festivals, art shows, to really bring people together rather than create separateness even annoyingly. And I've seen that in other cities. And as we know, art and culture is a way to help people deal with everyday stresses. It helps students learn more. And again, I think it's a really important key for community building. So, I'm hoping Burian stays on this track. I think it's a great track. The last thing I'll say is that knowing the changing demographics of the city, I would like to see not only supporting our really active arts community now, but to see more nurturing of those diverse communities that have moved to Burian recently, Vietnamese community, the Hispanic community, and just kind of ask, have we looked into nurturing those communities more in the arts?
So, we're going to send the microphone all the way down to Joel and put him on the spot first with how do you plan to engage young people in our community and ensure that their voices are heard?
That's a tough one. I think definitely some of the community-type programs we talked about. But I think, you know, I thought we had a Burian Student Council at one time that was affiliated with the city, but I guess it's not affiliated with the city. I think that's a wonderful way to engage youth and get them involved in the process, mock up the process, get them involved in what actually goes on in city government, similar to youth programs for music or other things like that, actually having that kind of program. But I guess that stopped. I'm not sure what happened there.
So, we do have a Burian Youth Council and they are no longer affiliated with the city and they do incredible work. They actually put on a candidate's forum not too long ago for all the people running for Burian City Council. And they did an amazing job. I think that fostering that sense of, I guess, importance that they play in our city is vital. Children are our future. I think listening, doing outreach directly in our schools, engaging with I think listening, doing outreach directly in our schools, engaging with our students, having people from the city, city council members, all kinds of people from the city going and directly engaging students, talking about issues ongoing, talking about fostering civic engagement. I think these are all great ways that we can really encourage youth to play such a monumental role in our city and the ongoings here. We're trying to build a city that we want them to enjoy in the future when they're working here, when they're building their families here. This is what we're supposed to be doing. We're supposed to be leaving something behind that they will love and enjoy. And so we need to look to them and what they need for their future. Listening is a huge part of that. Let's find out what their strengths are, what areas they need support in, and focus on addressing those.
Thank you.
So to tap into that and to connect with kids, they actually have to be physically present. And the city is partnering with the school districts, creating after-school programs that's been going on for quite a while. So that's in place. We need to expand on that. And with the schools eliminating the arts and the music programs, the city, by having these after-school programs, can provide that enrichment for their lives. And then they also have, they create that space to listen to these young folks and find out what their needs are and how to tailor the programs around them. This community also is in dire need of a recreation center where kids can actually know where they're going to be able to come and enjoy sports, enjoy arts, enjoy music, and feel safe doing that. Currently, we have a very small community center that's based more on adult programs than youth. And that's why we have the youth programs integrated into the schools. So that's where we're at.
I think every policy decision should start with one question. Does this empower families? Does this empower young people? Does this work to give someone an opportunity that they don't already have? I work with young people every day. I work with kids every day. And kids these days are more confusing than ever before. We have no idea what they want. No one's ever going to know what they want. So we need to give young people spaces and opportunities to develop themselves and learn from themselves and tell us what they want and voice their concerns to us. We can go to them all we want. We can speak to them all we want. But if they don't feel comfortable with themselves and where they're at and what they want to do, they're never going to tell us what they actually think. They're never going to trust that we're going to do what they want us to do. We need to empower families to make decisions for themselves. We need to give schools and clubs and sports centers and other organizations that are not affiliated with the city the ability to grow and the ability to outreach to students and young people. It's difficult to have one central location for people when young people can't drive, when they can't go out at night on their own, when their parents can't drive. This is a difficult, this is a difficult time in people's lives. So we can't say, "Build it and they will come," because they won't. So we can give opportunity for organizations and families and young people to make those spaces and those places for themselves. Because the more we can do that, the more these students are going to go on to college, get good jobs, and raise families on their own.
Being a previous representative of school nurses in the state legislature, one of the first things I did when I ran for office was reach out to school nurse colleagues at Highline and just to learn. So is the city council partnering with the schools on mutual goals so that we can work on things together for the benefit of kids? The other piece is that, I think it's really important for council members to be out there and do something simple like visit classrooms and see what do they think? And what would your ideas be for this solution that you need for the city? Because relying on television to school them on the political process is something that we don't need right now. And it goes with also that, you know, as a city council member, anytime that you're in a representative position, while we have a wonderful city hall totally built to do the business of the people, it's important to just be out there and go where people gather. And schools are one of those things. So those are the points I would make. I think that I would really enjoy reaching out to kids. They are very, I just love how open and direct, no filter than they are. And they will just tell you straight how it is.
So one of the things that happened when I was on council was we helped start an after-school basketball program. So that was partnering with the Highline schools. And that stemmed out of my own kids trying out for the high school basketball team and finding out that 11 kids made it and 800 didn't. And that's a lot of kids that don't have something to do. And it seemed to me, well, my husband and I had the philosophy that you keep them busy and that helps them stay out of trouble. So we tried to keep them involved and busy in sports as much as possible and things that would take up as much of their time, leaving time for homework, of course. But, you know, that was our goal and our plan. It's great to hear from kids what they need, but it's also good to look around us and see that they don't have much to do in Burian. Kids don't really have a lot of places they can go. They can go hang out at a park, or they could walk down the street. But where's the recreational center? Where's the sports programs? Where, you know, who's engaging them and getting them involved? So one of the things also we started was the youth police explore program. Had been going in Burian and it had stopped for a number of years. And while I was on council, we got that started again. So kids that are in high school can actually join this group and learn skills that are policing skills and work with a group. And it's great for kids.
So I'm going to ask Debbie to hang on to the microphone for one last question. This will be our tenth for the evening, so I think we're done pretty good. How would you address the issues of high rent/tenant rights in Burian?
High rent and tenant? Is it high rent and tenant rights?
How would you address the issues of high rent/tenant rights in Burian?
Okay, so when you have a tenant, you have a landlord. So I know that the tenant is oftentimes looked on as the victim when rents increase. But the landlord is reacting to tax increases and other cost increases going on. So you have to have a balanced understanding of what's the landlord facing. If you're just doing things for the tenants and ignoring the landlord, the landlord isn't going to be able to be a landlord anymore if it's become too expensive for them to operate. So a lot of this cycle of increasing costs happens as a result of cities increasing taxes and not increasing their revenue base by other means or cutting expenses. So these are passed on to landlords who then pass them on to their tenants. So I think when we're talking about drug epidemic, we're talking about going to the root cause. What is the cause? The root cause is things are costing landlords too much, that are costing tenants too much because cities are broke. Cities are broke because they're spending too much money on things they shouldn't be spending money on. So if we go back to the root cause and start looking at where this starts, tenant rights and landlord rights would be a lot easier to navigate and negotiate if the cities weren't putting too many costs on and if we provided more opportunities in the city for better jobs, better paying jobs, and more robust, high-quality economic development. I agree that there are underlying issues of income inequality, so we need to work for living wage jobs in the city. It's not a secret that the West Coast has really high standards of living and makes it really expensive to live here. I'd like to add, though, in terms of rents and tenant rights, however, there are also a number of other things we need to assure that people have proper notice when they need to move on to another property. If the property is being renovated, we have some older buildings here. We need to make sure that the rental properties are safe. There's not mold. They are habitable so not to endanger people's health. And also that I agree that the city could do a good job in providing some kind of navigation or troubleshooting services to tenants. Because as a landlord, and now I own a single-family home, that, you know, the power is tilted towards the landlord. And I've had to go through an eviction. And it is burdensome, but for a reason, right? The tenants need to make rights. And I was okay as the landlord having to go through that, but it was quite an eye-opener. So we really do need, in terms of a community output, balance that perspective of, you know, what are the landlords going through right now in terms of renovation and costs and the cost of land? But be really mindful that tenants, there's a balance of power against rents.
I think this speaks to a larger supply and demand issue that we're having as a region. We need to incentivize the construction and building of more denser, multifamily, multi-use apartments and condos in the city of Burian to allow for people to live here cheaply with lower rents. But overall, this is a problem that's happening on a regional scale, on a national scale. We're having increasing rents everywhere. So we need to work with private businesses and labor and organizations that work to improve tenant landlord rights to maximize our capacity for multifamily spaces, more denser spaces in areas that can use them, not in single-family neighborhoods, but in areas that can use them. I also think we need to focus on the four Ls in the city of Burian: land, labor, lumber, and loans. We need to look at what's available for us. We need to know what we can do, what we can accomplish with private and public partnerships. Because this is not going to solve, apartments and condos are going to spring up out of thin air. They're built by developers. They're built by construction companies. They're built by workers. And then they're housed by other workers and families and people. So we need to look at this as a continuing cycle and flow that works off of each other. In terms of the tenants' rights, there's been some really great movement in the city of Burian by community members and organizations to help tenants with bad landlords. But we need to ensure that local landlords with small family units aren't targeted. And we also need to make sure that tenants have the ability to have rights here.
All right. So the pipe dream, just build it and they'll come, that's great. We do need, and more housing will come to Burian, but we need to protect the people who live in those units. So for as long as I've been in Burian, I've rented apartments that have been on the low-low land. Those are studio apartments that work to keep me dry and safe. And I also have neighbors who, I live in a neighborhood with multifamily. And, you know, I visit my friends who live in multifamily buildings. And it's not just that if we have lots of housing, it'll solve the problem. These people have rats in their homes. They have black mold growing. They have leaky pipes, leaky roofs. I look out next to my neighbors and every winter, there's a waterfall coming off the roof. And it's been frustrating because it's like, what can I do to help these people? And there's not much. But very exciting, the council just passed ordinances to give renters rights. And that's been something that I've been fighting for, and it's fantastic. So we gathered the community. We listened. They wanted a strong proactive solution. And we have developed an inspection program so that we're not going to wait for someone to complain, but we're going out there and making sure that these places are safe for folks.
So I have been advocating for tenants' rights here in Burian for quite some time. I've been working with the coalition of groups and organizations that have been fighting for tenants' rights here recently. Council has passed some great new legislation to support tenants' rights, but that's not going to solve everything, and we're still fighting for more. One of the big issues that's coming up soon that we're fighting for is just cause eviction prevention. We have heard from advocates from groups that serve various tenants in our area that people are being evicted from their homes based on discrimination, whether that's racial bias, transphobia, homophobia, et cetera. So just cause eviction prevention will help address that loophole that allows tenants to be evicted from their homes due to things like discrimination or just because the landlord decided they want to hike the rent up exponentially for the next month and find somebody who can pay absorbent rent prices. We need to continue this ongoing effort to build strong tenant protection so that people renting in our city can feel safe and secure in their homes. And when it comes to high rent, we do have a shortage of affordable housing. We do need to focus on prioritizing more affordable housing in our city. That includes ensuring the housing we have now, currently available, doesn't have the rent skyrocketing so everyone's priced out of town and building new housing that can sustain our current population. Rent control also.
Well, in terms of the cost, I think it's a universal truth that the key to lower rent and lower housing cost in general is inventory. It's always been inventory. If you don't have the inventory, there's a premium on what there is. And those that will pay more will pay it, and those that own it will demand that higher rate. That's how it works. And this is not just a Burian city issue. This is a regional issue. Obviously, we've had a little bit of growth, say, in the past 10 years in our region. And I don't think the inventory of housing has kept up with that. As to renters' rights or tenant rights, you know, it's funny. That's kind of how I ended up in Burian, was one of those, how do you put it, outrageous high rent increases. So I was living in Seattle on Capitol Hill at the time, and the landlord decided they could get a whole lot more than I was willing to pay at the time. And it was one of the reasons we moved and purchased a house in this neighborhood. But you definitely have to balance the owner of the property's rights with the tenant's rights. And that's the key, is to get that balance just right, or you start losing people to their own property and then you don't have any rental property in that inventory of housing. And that doesn't help anyone if you do that.
Okay, we will start with closing comments, two minutes each, starting with Cindy, going to Joel, and then straight down the line.
So I want to thank everyone that has come here tonight, everybody that will be watching later. Civic engagement is so important in our community, and you all are taking on that role. So thank you for that. I think that everyone here tonight has their reasons for running. Mine is I want to build a brighter future for our city, for all of our residents. I want to address the needs of all of our people. And I do want to make sure that the biggest issues are prioritized. I want to make sure the basic needs are met for everyone. That's so vital. I think that you can look to the track records of the people who are running for these positions and see who has been dedicated to serving our city, what our priorities are, what our goals are, who we're looking to serve, and how we want to do that. And I believe that I can stand on my track record in saying that I have been serving the city. I'm dedicated to doing that. Whether I get elected or not, I will continue doing that because I care. I care about the people here. I care about our residents, the well-being and the future of our city. I care about my family and the future we have here as well. And I know all of you here tonight do as well. I want you to continue being informed voters. I want you to continue voicing what you care about, your concerns, what your needs are, because that's how we make change. People have to advocate for themselves. They have to advocate for their rights or nothing will ever get done. The people who do end up getting elected, whoever they are, they will be here to serve you. That is their job. Our elected officials are here to represent us. So make sure you hold us all accountable regardless of who wins this election. So I think that, I think it's great that everyone up here has put themselves out there as an option. My goal, once again, I'm just here to serve the people, so I'm asking for your vote.
I'd like to say thank you to everyone that took the time to come out as well. Thank you for all those that are going to take the time to watch this later. I know this is not necessarily like prime-time TV viewing to watch such an event as this. I would say definitely, in addition to this, take the time to reach out to the candidates that you have before you tonight. You definitely have some choices to make. If you have questions, reach out to them directly. Ask them questions. Engage them directly on what they believe. Find out what they support, what they don't support, and see if that's aligned with your values, the things that you support, the things that you want for Burian. This is not a three-day event. Some people are better at oratory than others. So this is not necessarily what I would call the perfect window into each candidate and what they and what they actually stand for and what their history is. So again, reach out. That's part of the process. And really do your research, because there's some definite differences between the candidates you have on this stage tonight. And then again, thank you. I hope I can earn your vote, and thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for being here again. And for the people who are watching, thank you for watching. Again, my name is Lucy Krakowjak. I ask you for your vote to serve you again on the Burian City Council. It's been a pleasure to serve you in the past, and I look forward to serving you in the future. Considering the experience that I have, I bring to the table, I've been a council member, the mayor of Burian, deputy mayor. I also have owned my own business in Burian for 20 years. I'm fiscally responsible, leading with that social service piece. So again, I want to thank you, and I look forward to seeing you.
Thank you for everyone who's going to be watching this, and thank you to the audience here, the people who've known me since I was five, and the people who I've just met this year. This is a wonderful display of activity in our community. I come from a working-class family. I remember my dad and my mom getting up at 5:00 a.m. every day to go to work, and my sister and me walking to school. I know that it takes hard work and dedication to go from the projects, which is what my family did, to homeownership. It doesn't happen overnight. It takes years of school, years of hard work, years of focus, years of love. And that's what we've done in Burian from 1993, even before then, to now. We've worked to make the city a destination for quality of life. I want to continue that dedication through a focus on prioritizing public safety, ensuring the city remains affordable for people, and improving our interconnectedness to our greater region. We have the ability to shrug off divisiveness and focus on what everybody needs to improve their lives. We have the prospect to ensure that Burian's not left behind in regional planning, in understandings of new people here, but also of people who have lived in this city for a long time. We need leadership that listens, and we need leadership that learns. And I think that as someone who is a product of Burian, who went on to travel the world, learn everywhere, learn from everyone I can, learn everywhere I can, work in all kinds of different jobs, all kinds of different positions, I want to bring that experience back and help achieve those leadership goals that we set as a city.
As I mentioned before, I never really knew I would end up in politics, but I think the main driving force is I'm a doer by nature. I just got a little tired of my friends and family complaining, and I said, "Well, I think if you really want to make change, you need to step up and do something." So this was, I thought, my opportunity to really tackle some issues that I'm really passionate about and benefit the community at the same time. I think that my health background provides a really special lens and would add to the council itself. In terms of healthcare, that's a sector that understands rapidly rising and uncontrollable costs, and what do we do about that? It's a question that we ask ourselves every day. And we know that there's outside factors like affordable housing and availability of housing that not only impacts people's quality of life, but actually how long they will live. And I'm also the executive director of a nonprofit, and I get how small businesses can really struggle. And being able to create more money for something new and how hard it is. And again, with outside factors, it's really difficult to recruit and retain good people when they can't move here because they can't afford to be here. So that is just a reflection, again, of our regional and community issues. And I think I also bring a fresh perspective, and I think this also comes back to my immigrant background in that the reality is when you move somewhere new, what you do is you learn about those who surround you. You need to understand the rules of the road in your new home, because you know what? You have to learn those rules in order to succeed. And that's something that my parents have really honed into me over the years. And I really value Burian. I know that it has a really rich storied past, but I just love how right now it's in a really dynamic place. And looking into the future in terms of who's coming into the city and making sure that this is a place for everyone who's been here for years and generations and people like myself who are new and call this home.
I just also want to thank everyone for sponsoring this event, for those of you that sponsored it and getting this facility here with, you know, last-minute kind of thing, and for everyone who came to hear what we have to say tonight. I would love to be the candidate that says something like, "Vote for me because I love puppies and kittens and chocolate ice cream, and it just sounds so great, and I'll give everyone kittens if you elect me." The reality is about Burian is that, you know, there's some truths about that you can't make promises that you can't keep, and you shouldn't do it. And you've heard some pie in the sky kind of ideas, and then you've heard some reality about that it's not as easy as it sounds when you talk about it. So I just want to emphasize again one more time in my closing statement that we have to expect excellence for ourselves. We want to take the homeless. We want to take the poor. We want to take on every problem that the region wants to shove on us. That is not the direction that we can go. We are a poor city. We need to move the other, the needle the other way, the complete opposite way. We need public safety we can't afford to pay for, so we need high-quality economic development. We need high-income housing. We need all of these things that are the highest and best. There are cities in this county that have put in no affordable housing for decades where Burian is full of affordable housing. That's why we incorporated, to get away from that. I'm educating you on this because I want you to know we are not obligated to anybody to take any of this stuff. And it's time we started standing up for ourselves, expecting excellence, and saying, "We want the best, not the crumbs. We want the best. It's our time. It's our turn." Thank you for coming.
So I would like to thank the candidates that are here for making yourselves available this evening so that the people in the audience and at home can compare and contrast you with your own opponent. I would also like to thank the sponsors again. They are Thomas from the King County Library System, Ken with the Highline Times, Andrea with the Southside Chamber of Commerce, that I did the whole thing right. And Becky with the League of Women Voters. And Chris Scott Schaefer from the Big Town Blog, making himself available again.